Like to call to order the regular meeting of the common council for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Could we please have real call?
Presiding Officer Mayor Dean Bonderhide.
Present.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leiken.
Present.
Councilmember Vince Helming.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Ecklerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mooney.
Here.
City Attorney Renee Khaber.
Here.
State Treasurer Kirsten Kenees, present. In order to have a quorum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you, Kirsten. Would you take a moment for personal reflection? Thank you. And all that are able, please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united in the midst of war with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes were sent out. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes from June eighteenth?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion from Kevin.
Second.
And second from John. Any further discussion? All in favor, send anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, tonight we have department presentations from Stan Seifer, Electric Department, and Ed Hollenden from the wastewater department. Ed, you drew the straw. So you go on first.
Yeah, we did just draw, actually. Ed Hollenden, Jasper Wastewater. We'll talk, we'll start out by talking about some capital expenditures and plans and whatnot. So the big one is the Northside Wastewater Project. We're trying to get some funds to to move on that. We're really, really close. We're getting close to purchasing some land. Once that's done, we'll go into the design phase. With the I F I, last year we ranked fourteenth through the Indiana Finance Authority. This year we ranked eleventh. I think and we need to be in the top six to receive funding, but the higher we get, the better to, from my understanding, to get you know, better rate on the loans, if you will, through the S R F. This is out of thirty-two projects statewide, large systems. Again, the new plant will alleviate some capacity issues we have out north and help with future north side development. As far as the county in Hayesville hooking up, really, I just feel like it depends on if they get money from I F I. I don't know, that's really where we're at, where we're at with the north side project.
You said I F I.
It's I F A.
I F A. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I did say I F I. I don't know if anybody's got any questions on that or not, but that's kind of where we're at.
How far in the future do you think that project could be, Ed?
Uh, I'd say three years. I'd say the plant would probably be built. What if, you know, if, once we get this loan and get the land and then again, I, I feel like that's going to be, you know, six months from now, they'll start bidding pretty quick and then I'd say it could be complete in three years. Other projects we've got going on right now, so we want to replace our sludge heater, that's been going on for a couple of years now. It's taken like about a year to actually get it in. We haven't got it in, but it's supposed to come in any day. The brawl Koopler out of Evansville will be changing that out for us. Next is a pistol grit equipment that's scheduled to be replaced in sixteen weeks. We, we continue to go down the path of automation and trying to get to that stage someday. We're in the process of renewing our N P D S permit and reevaluating our local limits. This is something the state requires us to do every five years. Again, we continue lining pipes. You know, that's our way of replacing them, like the water department replaces them, we line them. Reason being is the sewer lines are really deep and that's what everybody really does in the sewer industry. And we line manholes too. Projects on the horizon, although we're not hydraulically overloaded at the old plant, we're organically overloaded and depend, depending on how much the new plant helps in that regard to take some of that organic loading off of us, we'll probably see some changes at the old plant. And then we continue to replace thirty-five-year-old equipment coming up, like gravity belt thickener, belt press, blowers. Blowers is kind of interesting. We feel like we play some blowers, we could probably save some energy and they probably would pay for themselves pretty quick.
And what's the capacity at the, at the main plant? What, what do you have available?
Well, we're at, we're at sixty-four percent capacity from a, from a hydraulic water standpoint. But organically solids, you know, we're, we're over the design, put it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll see some kind of changes. And again, we're just kind of waiting for the new plant to take some of that load off of us out north from a solid standpoint.
Affect any environmental regulations or anything like that?
No.
Before we get to that point?
Well, well, that is something we addressed with the state already.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so they know our situation, as far as that goes. Yeah, that's a good question. That's really part of the, all the capital expenditures, if you will. Just a few side notes, we hired Guillermo De La Russa for our night shift and he's been with us for about a year. A good guy. And we hired a Caden Richardson in April. He took over for Brad Hope's position when he retired. And then Tom Royer, who's got forty-six years in, his last day is September fifth. So if you see him out, you might congratulate him. But I got those two, the guys together, which was interesting. Caden was twenty and here T C's got forty-six years in. I said, Caden, this is what you're going to look like after forty-six years. Uh, that's really all I have. I don't know, have anybody got any questions?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, hey, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Ed.
I saved the, the questions for Stan.
Yeah, that's fun. I can hack him maybe. Okay, Stan Seifer, Electric Manager, Superintendent. The big project we have going on is Northside or Northwest Substation. Starting to ramp up a little bit. Crimp lumber is pouring the pad. Starting on it today, they started. It has to be done by midweek next week. Transformer will be here August eighteenth, ship date. It'll be here on the twenty-first, twenty-second, it'll be all assembled and ready for service, but we're not ready yet. We actually have all the big materials all been ordered, the breakers and the steel and all that. It's just going, matter of time, it all comes in and put together. Hopefully by February twenty-sixth, we should be able to turn the switch, turn it on. And that will take care of everything from Thirty-Sixth Street on and Grassland Hills and part of the high school. So we'll, we're going to diversify, take our load, shift everything. That's going to be a long process, figure not which was best, but in the long run, it's going to work out better for everybody.
Is that area got a loop? You said one time, we talked about a loop, looping it around.
We're continuing working on that. Our next, one of our projects is on Meridian Road between Hemlock and one sixty-four. We are going to loop that together because if we lose our South Thai, say something happens, the whole family area, we can't backfeed nothing right now. Country clubs, they're College View and College and everybody'd be out of power until we can get fix it. Now we'll be able to switch things when we're done. We're just trying to make things where we can backfeed different ways. Same thing with our legacy living. If somebody would dig through that line out there, they're out until we get it fixed. So we are working on that too. I may not see that completed, but I'm going to work on it. And then also we finished, finally finished all the poles from March, that storm we had, we had twenty-eight of them broke off in the city. And it wasn't one area, it was over the whole city. Finally got all them completed. Working on the plans for a new electric office and warehouse on where the old power plant was, still putting things together for that. Hopefully maybe mid-summer next year, we can start on something out there. Maybe I'll see that one done too. We are, we actually hooked up twenty-nine new services since last July. And actually, the Electric Department, we've been helping the civil city out quite a bit. Figured it up, we had two hundred and thirty-six hours. We helped all the other departments in the city. But the Street Department, Wastewater, Gas Water, Parks Department, that's, we always keep track of how many hours we do, just so we know where we're at on that.
What type of things are you doing for them?
Trimming trees, working out at the Mueller Park, rewired that when they built that, we wired all that for them. The Buffalo Trace, we wired all that up for Park Rec out there too. And we do, we do a lot of tree trimming with Street Department. Not, we don't do too much for wastewater. Gas and water we do, but we help them out once in a while.
We hope they don't need your needs.
We do have one crew that's been up here on Main Street, working all the time, the same two guys been working up here, so down the road, the younger guy, he knows where everything's at if something happens. So, working on that. Fiber to the subs, we are going to start on that probably in about three weeks. We're going to work that in between building the new sub out there. Because some of the parts out there, we have to do ahead of time before crimps can keep working on there, so we're just going to keep working back and forth and get that fiber all put in. And we can't go to the south sub yet because Center Point is changing all the poles from substation south all the way to Huntingburg.
That's that stack of poles out there.
Yeah, they're putting all new steel poles in. And that's why some of them, I've been getting some phone calls about issues. The problem is that whole system out there is at the end of the line and Center Point has to, has to close a capacitor bank in. A lot of times they'll do it at six o'clock in the morning. And electronics, they got really sophisticated air handling system and shuts it off. Because it gets a spike in it and our top changers don't work fast enough in the sub to bring that back down to where it causes a little problem. There's not, we'll just have, I told them, you gotta live with it until we're done. Soon as Center Point gets done, everything will be, should be perfect. For his employees, we had one, Joe Ernie retired, the meter guy inspector, he retired. Pat Moly moved in his place. Now Rick Bachman is going to retire August fifteenth. So we're in the process of trying to replace him. And then we are working on two linemen. One guy retired because of health reasons. It's back. He's in health issues, so, but we've been doing, holding our own. So we get the two new guys in and it's going to help us a bunch. And we are working on a, our CAD system that has all of our mapping on it. We are moving that to the G I S system, which everybody in the utilities will be able to get on that map on the G I S and look where all our stuff's at. Right now, they can't follow none of our stuff on our mapping system. It's a totally separate one, but we're trying to convert it. And Rob and Jeff and John Heaton has been working on that, trying to put it all together. And there's a lot of, a lot of the moving parts in that, more than I can handle. So, other than that, that's all I have. Have any questions for me?
Yeah, Northside Substation, I know it sounds like a personal ball here, but what, what kind of future road, where, where are we, where are we going to be at when you've got all those areas up?
We, the city, our area, we got a hundred and fifty acres that can be built on yet. All the open fields that's in our territory yet, we got a hundred and fifty acres. So we don't know what's going in there, if it's apartment complexes or what. So we're just going to make sure we're above, you know, above the game, so if something happens, we can handle it all. Because when, when Mill Street get, project gets done, we got to shut that sub down. And this other one ain't, the other one will be running before that gets done, so we'll have power out there. If we wouldn't have that, it'd be, as long as it didn't get over eighty-five degrees, we'd be all right. So, but.
That's good long-term planning, Stan.
Yeah, we're working on it and that's what we figured out, that's what the numbers we use when we design this substation and worked it out, so. It's going to, the growth's out there yet and we don't, you don't know what's going to be in there. And we want to make sure we got plenty of power. When I leave, I want to make sure there's plenty of power for everybody. That's it, that's in two years, four months. And let's, something else. Have anything else for me?
Any other questions for Stan?
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you guys do. And his comment about the departments, you know, working with other departments and we have that collaboration going on all the time, so really appreciate that, that's valued. So now we'll move externally to DuBois County Tourism. Ask Whitney to come up.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Whitney.
Starting out, I thought I'd let you know what's in your guys' package here. So, every year we do a review within our board, so I want, I thought it was nice just to share the review. So inside the packet, you'll see our, looking ahead in twenty twenty-five, talking about our twenty twenty-four, our focus areas and that nature. I will be going over a lot of this information, but this is for you to keep. In addition, we have our annual visitors guide. So every year we develop a visitor's guide. This year we did do a Spanish one as well, so I'll be mentioning that and talking about that. So that's inside the packet. And then motor coach traffic and the motor coach industry has risen to one of our twenty twenty-five concentrated goals. And we've been putting a lot of energy and a lot of work into enticing the motor coach industry to come and, and see us. Things have changed drastically since the pandemic and we had to make some changes and adjustments, like every, every industry, I feel like there's been a lot of changes and motor coach industry is definitely one of them. So with that, you'll find two different packets here. This is the DuBois County Packet for Motor Coach Traffic, so you can kind of go inside. You'll see the list of the top places for groups as well as a three-day itinerary, a sample itinerary, just to give people idea of what they can experience in our area. And then on top of it, we do also do a co-op with four D M Os, Destination Marketing Organizations along Interstate sixty-four. So Clark Floyd County, which is so in, Harrison County, Visit French Lick, West Baden, and DuBois County. We partnered together for the tour in sixty-four and we made a really nice map and a really nice piece. So I wanted to share that as well because we were pretty proud of that piece and putting that together. So going back, this, this legal-sized piece of paper that I distributed alongside the packet. This is kind of just in a nutshell, what we'll be talking about. So if you go on this side, talking about the economic impact of tourism, I wanted to start there. Every year we receive through Rockport Analytics some data. So it's always going to have a lag time. This year we received twenty twenty-three data and, and so that is the, the most up-to-date data that we have. This next year we'll have twenty twenty-four. So with that, the twenty twenty-three report, you can kind of look at, they give us a little report card. And we are ranked as number twenty-five out of ninety-two counties in tourism spend. And tourism spend per capita rating of number fifteen out of ninety-two. Our, our total tourism spend for DuBois County in twenty twenty-three was a hundred and twenty-three point four million dollars. And that is a five point six percent increase from last year. And that is on top of the year previous, we had over sixteen percent, I think it was sixteen point eight. So in two years' time, there was an increase of twenty-two point nine percent. So pretty phenomenal numbers. We are really happy to see that continuation of that trend. I foresee twenty twenty-four to even have a larger increase than five point six percent, just because we know where our innkeeper's dollars were and it was a pretty nice size percentage for twenty twenty-four. And I'll go over that here briefly as well. So in a lot, in, I, I, I kind of like looking at ten years. So in the past ten years, from sixty-five million to a hundred and twenty-three point four million had a substantial increase, eighty-nine point eight percent in tourism spend. So very excited that that continuation is happening. I know it's a huge thanks to the collaborations and partners and, and everyone working together as that's what it takes in order to have those type of increases. I did also want to kind of show the distribution of spend, so you can look at that at your leisure. Food and beverage and shopping being the, the top percentages and, you know, lodging at seventeen, transportation eighteen, eighteen percent. So you can kind of see that breakdown.
Whitney, does the state still use Rockport Analytics and that's, that's been consistent all the way through, right?
Yes, so the state still uses Rockport Analytics, so it's very nice that they're comparing apples to apples. Mm-hmm. And the state does give us this information now, we don't have to pay for that anymore. So that's a part of Indiana Destination Development Corporation, they give us that information and data findings. On top of that, it, it gives you a little bit of an idea of a breakdown of what that means on the side here about it promoting a healthy job market. So there are one thousand three hundred and thirteen jobs that is supported by tourism. And then you can kind of also see, I, I really like seeing the capture and retaining dollars spent by visitors. So every dollar spent by visitor of DuBois County, forty-five percent in economic impact is returned, so that's fifty-five point five million dollars. So really, really substantial numbers. Tourism is very important for our county, I know you all know that, but I kind of just, it's, it's nice to have the data to back that as well. I did kind of also state what Visit DuBois County is. I, I, I know a lot of people don't know what a D M O is necessarily, so I thought it might be nice for you guys to read over that and see that. I did also want to mention our purpose and who we serve. So we've been having some, a lot of internal discussions as our board. We have a lot of our different projects have come to fruition and we are kind of looking internally and externally about what our big next projects are going to be. And first is, we want to make sure we understood who we are and what we serve. So if you don't mind, I'll read this for you. "The purpose of Visit DuBois County Tourism efforts, efforts and projects are to increase visitor's spend, bringing an economic boost to our communities from outside dollars. Through serving our visitors and elevating experiences, we are serving our community as well. Tourism generates jobs, generates sales for our local businesses, and it leaves the state in local tax burdens. Our efforts are focused on the best initiatives with the highest potential to increase the visitor economy, economy as well as considers the end goal of increasing the quality of life of local residents as they are a true reason for our existing." And I think that just kind of shares why, you know, the, the why behind what our organization is and who we really are serving. So I, I did, I also did want to mention that we are funded by innkeeper's tax. So anytime anyone stays in a hotel, our lodging property, five percent is collected and that is how we are funded. So with that, our incre, increase in overall innkeeper's tax for twenty twenty-four, we had an eight point one percent increase. The year previous, we were at two point nine percent and the year previous in that is eighteen point three percent. So pretty substantial increases in our innkeeper's tax.
And Whitney, what does that equate to for twenty twenty-four in dollars?
Just under six hundred and sixty thousand. So I kind of mentioned a little bit, our twenty twenty-five concentrated goals, we have a list of focus areas and things that we want to make sure not to forget about. But then we, we know in order to move the needle, we need to really capture some smart goals. I know we've done that back in the past too with you, Kevin. So we kind of continued that. I thought that was really great in doing so. So with that, motor coach and group travel, that moved to our concentrated goal for this year. And we are attending those different conferences, we're putting the time and energy into those different promotional packets. Getting some detailed itineraries alongside our co-op partners. So right now we're working on a Halloween, a fall and a Christmas along those tour and sixty-four partners. So that when one of us shares it, all four of us are sharing it and it just increases our impact. On top of that, we are carefully targeting the top twenty that we had the best conversations with and we're going to have continued conversations at least three times this year. So we're really trying to get that one-on-one relationship. There's a lot of new people in that industry. A lot of people retired and, and we are, we are learning names. I know tap dance, this is my second year at tap dance and it's amazing what, the second time, how many, how many more conversations and how people are willing to, to hear what you have to say more. So it's definitely a relationship-building type of industry. Visitors guide distribution, our goal of distributing all sixty thousand guides, this year we did do five thousand Spanish guides as well. So sixty-five thousand total. And we did look up, so we, we did some research on what, what visitors guides do for our D M O. And we found some data. So Destination Analyst Study on Visitors Guides showed a result of a return of investment on an average of a forty-eight dollars to every one dollar spent in putting that packet or that, that visitors guide together. Now the scale is pretty wide though, because I looked over the data and I was like, okay, can I trust that? Like, you know? So they actually had a breakdown of all the data. A nineteen to one was the smallest with the largest being ninety-six to one, so a pretty large scale. So even taking the nineteen to one, that's a seven hundred thousand dollar return on investment. And even if it's less than that, that's a huge win. So we know that visitors guides are important for that reason. Earn Media, we have a limited budget. We are trying to use it the best of our ability and we know press releases are free. So we've been really focusing our energy and efforts on doing some free press releases, distributing the word of what's going on and making that an important part of our efforts as well as doing some other earned media pieces through radio and, and different channels of that nature. So that's just kind of in nutshell, some of our concentrating goals. Now we are continuing some visitor experience enhancements, our new visitors guide, we keep on doing some different improvements with our visitors guide. Making it an ideal place for people to come and have conversations. Continue our literature creation and distribution. Continue doing an annual update on our kiosks. We want to keep those up and fresh and it's really easy for things to get updated in a hurry. So we kind of made that as a goal, as to look like our annual piece every year. Marketing and branding, we're continuing our, our brand across, across our different platforms. And we're looking at search engine optimization. We have some different partners in place for, for making sure our search engine optimization is at its peak, as well as paid search, we work through two-six digital with that. They do a fantastic job, as well as they hand over tasks for us to do, so we, 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 we are able to afford them. So, so with that, it's been a really great partnership with them. I'll, I'll kind of go briefly over these because I want to go to the backside. So we do, you know, digital, we do tangible, we do across-the-board marketing with sports marketing, with golf shows. But we, we really do a, a breadth of different niche marketing and we know how important it is for our messaging. And we also know how important it is to share what we're doing so that we can build those collaborations. With three staff members, we, we don't, we want, we're not going to make as much of an impact as if we continue talking like with the Chamber of Commerce or those different organizations that we can work towards a goal together. It, it really, it really helps in making an impact. So I will flip to the backside just because I want to talk about some of our successes and I feel like I'm talking for a long time, so I apologize. So just recently, we did our spring campaign in partnership with Indiana Destination Development Corporation and Discover Southern Indiana. So with that, we put in seventy-five hundred dollars, Discover Southern Indiana puts in seventy-five hundred dollars and I D D C puts in fifteen thousand dollars. So it's a thirty thousand dollar campaign and this is the second year of doing it and we had some really significant results. Last year, I, I, I thought it was a huge win. This year, it's just no question. So the campaign at, on their different social media platforms, it, it was across social media, radio, native advertising, as well as a breadth of, of different platforms that they use for, for the, for the campaign. But with their social media, it had a hundred and seventy-six million impressions. Nine percent increases in clicks from the last year to two point three six million clicks to our Discover DuBois page that is on the Visit Indiana website. A hundred and six percent rise in click-through rate, thirty-three percent drop in cost per click. The Discover DuBois page on the Visit Indiana website had three point one million users, five point one million page views, which is a two hundred and twenty-four percent increase and a sixty-seven percent increase in engagement. So we're really seeing some strong numbers for our campaign. I did want to mention that the, the industry envision, I'm sorry, not the industry, the, the agency. The agency envision, which is the Agency of Record Variety D C, they stated how they really enjoyed our imagery and they felt like we were a big part in the success of that and I was really proud to hear that because we would do a lot of work and trying to get the right photography and different things of that nature. Also, DuBois County Wayfinding. So the wayfinding sign, that was a long project for us. So if you're up and about, you should have saw them probably, nineteen wayfinding signs. We worked with sixteen different artists to make some original masterpieces on the backside of them. And all across, it was just And um, all across, it was just um, a huge win for us, a huge win for our county. Um, Inside Indiana Business actually did a special write-up for us. They, they listed us as uh, number one in the, in the Indiana Roundup on one of their, their sections. And it was just really cool. Um, my, my uh, uncle from Illinois, he actually called me and, and uh, he said, what is this about? I, I see, uh, it was uh, talking about Visit DuBois County, which he knew I worked at. But then it also happened to have my mother's artwork, and that's for his sister. So it was just, just really neat to hear it reaching all the way to Bloomington, Illinois, um, the message, um, and having those conversations and, and, and having that earned media um, alongside that. DuBois County Eclipse, I can't believe it was just last year. I feel like it sounds, feels like it was ages ago with all the planning and everything involved with that. Um, but that had a um, really nice increase in room nights. Um, our, uh, we were, you know, we had to do the branding, we got some logos, we got a website going. We made a map, we had promotions, we hired an independent car contractor. Um, it was a lot, it was a lot of coordination and um, and the result was that we had an increase of a thousand rooms. So it was a hundred and sixty percent increase uh, dur- during the four days surrounding the eclipse. So uh, really, um, really happy with that. Um, we obviously didn't know what to expect. Uh, there was some really outlandish numbers out there and uh, but there was still a a really nice uh, increase in traffic. Um, additional highlights, uh, we did win the twenty twenty-four Best in Indiana Act Art Activation. That was with the mural at our visitor's center, as well as the um, Underpass mural, um, and tying them together and um, with future applications that, that I know we've been in discussions with for, for some time with the Art Loop. Um, we uh, we are very proud of the Hampton Inn and their team. They are the number one Hampton Inn in North America. They are fantastic. Um, they also, I did not put this on here, but that was a, um, I, I, I missed this. They did wi- they are the winners of the Will Cook Award. That is the most prestigious award that you can get in tourism, and they won that last year. Um, Sultan's Run, uh, number four best public golf course in the U.S. uh, for, in twenty twenty-four. Um, they also got some great news that they're going to be sharing really soon. Uh, they continue to win awards and they do a really great job um, for, for um, for the brand of DuBois County. And then obviously our communities. Um, just last week, we had four different things we shared with Jasper, getting some earned media, Honeyberg getting earned media, and Vernon getting earned media. We are really blessed with the communities um, and what they're doing to get all that earned media. Um, we completed our video project, we did the Spanish inclusion, we have been doing in uh, website increases, Facebook increases. Um, last year, we did twenty-six press releases, thirty-seven blog posts. Uh, we did launch our DuBois County Tourism Capital Improvement Fund, where we um, selected a hundred thousand dollars uh, of awards and to uh, select entities. Uh, we continue our grants that's uh, you know, near a hundred. It's, I think it was ninety thousand. Um, we continue with our stage, our co-op advertising. Um, and um, another really cool thing was that um, IDDC liked our ads on social media. They happened to see them. Um, Amy Hal happened to see them online, and she asked to get all of the um, imagery, and they put money behind it too. So it's, it's just really great to have some good collaborative partners that appre- that we appreciate, and they, and they appreciate us as well. Um, and uh, DC Multi-Sport, we also had a, a really big milestone of um, reaching three hundred and thirty thousand in charitable giving this last year. And that is through the help and support of all the many businesses that are sponsors. Um, without them, we would not have reached that level. Um, I'll end by saying, um, this is the Destination Interba- International. Um, this is uh, what they put together, and um, it really makes a lot of sense. It all starts with a visit. If you build a place where people want to visit, then you have built a place where people want to live. And if you build a place where people want uh, want to live, then you have a, built a place where people want to work. And if you build a place where people want to work, then you have built a place where businesses and residents will invest. And if you build a place where businesses and residents will invest, then you have built a place where people will want to visit. And it, it's, it is that cycle. So we, we know the importance of all working together through that. Any questions?
There's a lot of information, Wendy.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to take so much time.
That's good.
It's a big wow for you.
It is. You've been busy and uh, and been successful. We really appreciate.
And you know how much I love performance metrics, so this is very nice to have and.
Good. Wonderful. Yeah, thanks, Whitney.
Any questions for Whitney? If not, we know where to find you.
Okay, and I will mention on the backside of this, of this uh, two-pager, um, it does have all of our board members listed, as well as our staff members. So you're welcome to look that over and um, I wanted to let you know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know I can't talk as fast as she can, but we'll move on to the next agenda item. She had a lot to cover. Um, ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash ten. Oh, I'm sorry. I checked that off already, so. Yeah, let's go to um, replacement of the Jasper Community Arts Commission. Uh, we had a board member that resigned, and I think we were seeking out a replacement for that. Is there a recommendation?
We just need to nominate our motion then.
Motion nominate, yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept Julie Piper uh, as the uh, replaced board member for the JPAC. Sorry, Julie Piper, so.
I'll second that.
Kind of a motion from Phil and a second from Nancy. Any further discussion?
And Phil Julie is interested in this?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I did talk to her this time, so uh, we are good. So apologize for the snafu on the left, so.
Again, I think we had a, we had a slate of really well-qualified candidates that stepped forward and wanted to be a volunteer on this board. Again, hate that we have to limit it to just one at a time, but uh, working on the process to get more community members involved uh, in there. So in summary terms, working on that as well. So it's uh, nice breath of fresh air here. Move forward.
And keep those names in a pool for another time.
Yes. Okay, I have a motion from Phil and a second from Nancy. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations to Julie. And she'll make her first meeting in two weeks.
We'll let file them, and we can reach out to Julie.
Okay. Now I'll go on to ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash ten. Ordinance providing for uniform code for traffic upon public streets. With that, could I have a motion to read the ordinance on the second and final reading, and in full or by title only?
Make the motion we read for the second and final reading, by title only, please.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
Second from Chad. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read the ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash ten by title only?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash ten. An ordinance providing for a uniform code for traffic upon the public streets of the city of Jasper, Indiana. Stop intersections designated, amending section nine point two four of ordinance number five four six.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second and final reading?
So a move.
Motion from John.
I'll second.
And a second from Vince. Further discussion?
Some of them already have the crossbars, so I guess this means they'll put the stop signs up now, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, once it's approved here, then we'll go ahead and move with that. They've got all the um, what do you call this? The holes for the post and everything are, are in place, so it's a matter of us adopting.
Did they discuss, was there, was there any concern about the stop sign at fourth, backing traffic up into third? And, and breaking that down into one lane instead of two?
That is going to be one lane, yes.
And then there's going to be a stop sign right at fourth, right?
Right.
Like I, I saw people just the other day, like five or six cars coming right off there. And when that stop sign goes, it's probably going to start to kind of back that up. I don't know if it hurts you, but I guess.
I, I mean, in answer to your question, they consider, I think, all those things.
I think if I see.
You're just not reading this again.
If we probably, probably see that to be a problem, then we might have to readdress that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Did, did we discuss putting up all the higher visibility?
Yes, and he does have those, yes. They actually, I think they're flashing stop signs, so. Uh, Jeff told me they were in inventory.
Having the meeting last month, you uh, discussed, Mayor, that Main Street at Fifth and Main Street at Seventh, those are already built into that plan.
Yes.
The one at Mill Street and Fourth is a new proposal.
Proposal. And really, these are all new for, for us in the city and getting, getting adjusted to.
And again, bringing that uh, Mill Street and Fourth for pedestrian traffic, as we try to create that pathway from downtown to the Lowry Cultural Center. For people that are.
That's correct.
Any other conversation, questions? Hearing none. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance number twenty, twenty-five, ten has passed. Sorry. Next on the agenda is ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash eleven. It's ordinance approving and authorizing a loan between the Gas Department and the Water Department. Could I ask for a motion to read the ordinance in the second and final reading, in full or by title only?
I'll make a motion to uh, read ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash eleven by title only.
Okay, a motion from Nancy, read by title only.
I'll second.
And a second from Phil. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would the city attorney please read ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash eleven by title only?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash eleven. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Jasper, Indiana, approving and authorizing a loan between the Gas Department and the Water Department within Jasper Municipal Utilities and other matters connected therewith.
Could I have a motion to approve the ordinance in the second and final reading?
So vote.
I have a motion from Paul.
I'll second.
Second from Vince. Further discussion? I think there was some follow-up and investigation on, on uh, what we thought is, would be appropriate within the, the department, within the Utilities Department, loaning from one to another. And um, I, I, hopefully that was all satisfactory to everyone. Get the answers you wanted, so.
They did get the bids on all of the projects and are able to do both the primary projects and the alternate.
Good.
Okay, no other questions on this, then I will call for a vote. All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, twenty, twenty-five dash eleven. Next on the agenda is a gas contractor's license application.
I have a gas contractor's license application from Jamie Diaz um, with Carpenter Rentals. It's been examined by, by the Gas Department, uh, received a ninety-two percent on the um, exam, and approved by the Gas Department.
I'll make a motion to approve Jamie Diaz.
I have a motion from Kevin.
I'll second.
Second from Chad. Any further discussion? Again, it was a good score. I like seeing that. Any other questions? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Diaz. Uh, next on the agenda is the acceptance of donations.
Um, the Park Department received a donation from Advanced um, Sports Supply for two rolls of polythene scap. And the value was six hundred dollars, and their board did accept the restriction on that donation. So that's the only one I have this month.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations as received.
I have a motion from Kevin, accept the donations.
Second.
I have a second from Paul. Any further discussion?
Kirsten, we were just curious. We didn't used to have to accept these every month. Has something changed with the State Board of Accounts? Or is there a reason why we have to accept these every month?
I think that we really should have been accept, accepting them. Um, we just decided to do it in a monthly, at every monthly meeting. Um, just to not lose track of the ones that have been done.
Well, it just shows again, we have a very generous community.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, we thank Advanced Sports Supply for their donation. Additional discussion items, uh, the board appointment process. Is someone speaking?
I think that was put on the agenda because we had um, Lauren did some research and put together a memo concerning some recommendations with respect to a process that um, we could put into place for receiving um, applications, if you will, uh, from community members. And so the idea was that we would have a centralized location where people could go to um, look at information about what positions are available, what the um, the roles are of those positions, and um, just basic information about the boards. And have then uh, an application, a form that they could fill out if they're interested, uh, from which we could then, we, we, the city boards, council, um, wherever appointments are needed, could um, pull from those people in addition to, you know, others. Um, and so we're just accepting any other comments um, before we try to implement that process.
Go ahead.
Well, Phil and Chad and I had kind of met as a subcommittee on this, and we definitely appreciate Lauren's work on preparing this. Um, Phil and I just had a brief conversation. We're probably not ready to move forward exactly with this. I had a whole lot of questions.
Yeah, not, not intended to necessarily have a vote, but just to.
Just information.
So probably Phil and Chad and I should meet again and just review this and then keep proceeding with this.
With Lauren.
With Lauren, well, she may be moving on. Where'd she go? Oh, there she is.
Yeah.
We can meet with her, definitely. Um, but again, like one of my questions is, is this for the Common Council only to use? Because in that, what Lauren prepared, it says Comic, it keeps referring to Common Council, where other board appointments could use this also.
Absolutely.
And then just, I don't know, I just had several questions that um, that we should just discuss.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the point is to let everybody know again that this is an ongoing process, and if you have any um, any suggestions or questions, just please feel free to reach out so that um, not too distant future, we can put together a plan and implement that, maybe hopefully for twenty twenty-six.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, again, thank you, Lauren, for your work on this. I appreciate all your research.
I think to your point, Nancy, though, this is going to give us a pool of potential candidates, no matter who's making the appointment. And that's, that's really beneficial for all, so. Next item was the opioid litigation.
Um, that also is just for information this evening. Um, there has been a uh, proposed settlement with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. Um, in fact, I came across a um, about a, a five or maybe it's eight-page summary of the um, of those settlement terms. And um, I just literally just came, got that this evening, so I'll be sending that out to you council members. Um, but it was, the settlement is recommended by our outside council. Um, so uh, that will be on the agenda for um, for action at the August meeting. But the, the funds, to my knowledge, would not be treated any differently than the funds that we've already received under the opioid uh, litigation settlements.
So basically, there'd be more funds added to this.
Yes.
With a new timeline for those funds, or would it?
Yes.
Okay.
I think.
It's from a different source, correct?
I believe these are over fifteen years.
The parameters are the same as what we've had.
I, I believe so. I tried to find the um, I, I, the link that takes you to the amount. They, they have a breakdown of estimated funds for each state. I could not, I could not come up with that, but the total settlement is in the vicinity of eight billion dollars for these two um, entities.
Yeah.
So that's a stay tuned. I'm sure I'll be sending you more information, but it will be on the agenda at the August meeting.
And you have that in your notes on the pre-meeting. And you have that in your notes on the pre-meeting notes.
And then the opioid fund distribution process, is that an update from you?
Yes, we're still speaking with a group from IU and they have kind of a plan in place. And so, what we would do is we would form then a, based on their research, which they would be doing probably through this first semester of school, and finding out what other communities are doing, what is restricted versus non-restricted means, because there are certain ways these funds have to be really given, given away. We don't really have any projects, I guess you'd say, internally within the city. So, really, it would be kind of a granting group and we could, you know, I think Josh was interested in being on that group, Kirsten, Mayor, maybe, whatever, whoever we form, maybe even a police officer. I think there was one that showed some interest. So, we're still developing what that process would be with the students from IU. And I think at the end of the day, they would come up with like a grant form that we would use, the whole process we would use, and then we could start distributing some of these funds, hopefully in early twenty twenty-six. So, we'll just continue to move forward with that discussion.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned.
Is there anything else to want to mention? I think that this week, we did take action to raise the price on our trash stickers from a dollar fifty to two dollars effective September first, right?
And I noticed that we haven't had an increase for fifteen years.
Yes.
That needs to be mentioned.
Yeah, and it looked like the actual cost.
It's quite a big.
Was about three dollars. We're still a dollar behind the eight ball here with recycling and trash removal. So, still should be reasonable.
To load up.
That's right.
They are.
I think the number one question I've seen is, when does it go into effect? And it is September first.
September first.
And all of the trash stickers that you currently have will still be honored.
You could buy up, like John said, load up.
Don't buy too many and it will run out.
There was some discussion at one point as to whether or not to require those for the rubbish pickup. That's not been changed, is it?
It's not been changed.
You mean like yard debris?
Yes, yeah. So, Phil, keep your leaves coming.
Oh, and I will.
And Mayor, I have a question. We had received an email, I think everybody at this table here, from Indiana fifteen about a, the project list for Jasper that will be included in the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy submitted to EDA by Indiana fifteen. And I was just curious, they presented a list, who like within the city is making sure that this is our priority list, that we need to make sure that this is done, so that if we want to, like, ask for a grant for something, it has to be on this list.
Yeah, we went through that internally. I'll take responsibility for that. But we ran it out through all the department leads again, just to make sure they were all in agreement with the prioritization. If there's anything missing that they had and what we had on our prioritization list that we work with on a regular basis, so.
I just want to make sure.
We resubmitted that, I think it was last Friday. Is that right, Josh? Earlier this week?
It says the deadline is September twelfth, so there is time.
And as our Indiana fifteen representative, I'll thank you for getting ours in. You're one of the, you don't have to chase down, chase down here at the end of the season. That's a very important, important list and important projects need to be on there. If they're not on there, we, you're exactly. Some of the federal funding, so.
All right, that's all I.
I think we ended up on some of those, making them a broader category than a more specific project so that we had some. But that finalized list, we'll get that out. And so, if there would be any last-minute changes, we could still have time to do that. Okay, thanks, Nancy. Any other questions? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I still move.
I have a motion from Chad.
Second from Vince.
Second from Vince. He's been trying to get one in here.
No first.
All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Mill Street from thirtieth to thirty-sixth street. We've had this in our long-range comprehensive plan, the Jasper multi-modal plan. If, if you think this is a mid-states corridor discussion, you're mistaken. I'm sorry. This is a Mill Street-focused project. We have entertained Lockmueller as our contractor back years ago to work with us on the design and the grant applications. It's a four-point-two-million-dollar project estimated right now. It is a federal grant of two-point-eight-four-five million and a city portion of one-point-three-six million. So, that's what this next session is all about. It's a public information session, similar to what you've seen at some of the mid-states where they rolled it out and you, they'll have people stationed and providing information on the particular project. But this is something, I just wanted to make sure you all know that, that if you don't sit through something you don't want to sit through. And I don't think there's gonna be a lot of sitting either. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the Lockmueller Group and I think Nicole, is she?
All right, we're getting close, so I'll just go ahead and start. I'm Nicole Minton, Public Outreach Coordinator for Lockmueller Group. And the mayor just asked that I put together a couple of slides to kind of welcome you and explain a little bit about the evening and some housekeeping for how we're gonna handle this since we're piggybacking off of the council meeting. Again, as the mayor said, this is the Mill Street Improvement Project. It's a widening project for Mill Street between thirtieth and thirty-sixth, as he mentioned. Part of the why is, as he mentioned, the planning that had gone into this by the city, various plans that had stated there needed to be some sort of improvement made to Mill Street, identified it as an opportunity to help support industry, to maybe as a parallel corridor, provide some relief to US two thirty-one. Also, identified that connections to thirty-sixth street and forty-seventh street could be of great benefit to the community. And also, there were concerns over safety and the accessibility. So, how will we do that? To begin with, we'll start by meeting the current design standards. We'll widen to twelve-foot lanes. We'll add center turn lane and curbs and storm drains. We'll also be improving the shoulders and adding some road profiling to improve some of the areas where the line of sight and the visibility is lacking. So, this is our schedule. It's also in the handout that we'll be passing out here shortly. Construction is anticipated to begin in spring of twenty twenty-eight. And just a little bit about this evening. Because we have most of you already in here, we're gonna have, back on this corner, the sign-in sheets and the handouts. So, as you're taking a look at the display, if you would like to make your way back to this corner, we'll have a couple of sign-in sheets set up. If you can sign in with your name and we'll give you a handout that explains a lot of what you're gonna see on these boards. Our team members will be stationed around the room to help ask questions. You've got the big boards here where you can see a little greater detail, a typical section back there and we'll have somewhere, someone there to help explain. And also, the plans are over on this table here. So, make sure that you grab a comment form. We'll have a box back here as well. So, when you're done, you can give us any sort of comments that you have on the Mill Street improvements and leave that in the form of a comment form for us. If you have any questions, any of us with a name tag on are able to help get you some answers for that and we appreciate you coming. Thank you.